Chloram, I can.
And one, two, three, four, we do.
Great, then I will go ahead and count you in. Three, two, one.
You're on mute, Chair Privatalli. Thank you.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the planning commission. Twenty twenty-two, this meeting is called to order. I'll request staff to call the role for commissioners who are present in.
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Higman.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado. Absent. Mr. Samuzi.
Here.
Vice Chair Saudi.
Here.
And Chair Privatalli.
Here. Here. All right, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to the meeting procedures. Due to the COVID nineteen shelter in place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like staff to address how public comment will work this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair Privatalli. At this time, I'd like, well, thank you, everyone who is not a commissioner has their cameras off, so thank you. Please turn them on when your agenda item is up. The meeting is being recorded. And streamed live to YouTube viewers are welcome to attend by telephone calling six, six, nine, nine hundred, six, eight, three, three, and entering the meeting ID, which is eight, nine, seven, four, five, six, 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 five, one, one, and put in the pound sign. Or you may watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you are participating via telephone tonight and wish to provide public comments, please press star nine when the chair opens to public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. At the chair's discretion, you will have up to three minutes to speak. If you submitted comments during, prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the planning commission. And closed captioning is available for this meeting, and the link is on YouTube.
Let me now describe meeting procedures. We will begin with a staff report, then we will hear from the applicant. Applicant, if you could please try to keep your presentation to no more than ten minutes, that would be appreciated. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification given asked to unmute themselves. Please keep comments to three minutes if you can. Commission, commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. And or. We will then close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. Now I will ask for any urgent communication. Anyone with an urgent communication on the topic not on the agenda, mute us, the commission at this time. Leslie.
Yes, and before I turn to that, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Mercado has arrived. And so. Let's say seven oh two, because we were just very prompt today. So if you wish to speak on something not on the agenda and you are phoning in, please use, press start nine to raise your hand, otherwise use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And no one wishes to speak.
Now move on to the consent calendar, which has one on the minutes from March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. This is all mission being on my. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
If you'd like to speak on the item on the consent calendar, which is the minutes, again, if you're dialing in, please press star nine to raise your hand, otherwise use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And no one wishes to speak from the consent calendar.
Okay, nice, Leslie. All right, um. If there are no comments from the commission, I would entertain a motion for approval. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
As Commissioner Higman, I'll second the motion.
All right, is there any discussion of the minutes? Don't see any. Okay, great, Leslie, would you mind taking a roll call?
Yeah, with the motion by Commissioner Mercado and a second by Commissioner Higman. And Commissioner Harris.
Commissioner Harris says yes.
Mr. Higman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Welcome. Mr. Samuzi.
I will abstain.
Vice Chair Saudi.
Yes.
And Chair Privatalli.
Yes. Excellent.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll now move on to. The public hearings. We have one item, and it is eighty-eight Vivian Street, which is a seventy-unit residential development. And this development requires the demolition of the existing country club all. At which I have played, I have bowled, so sorry to see it go. Understand things change. And the construction of seventy-for-sale residential units, including six available to low-income households in fourteen separate buildings. The project planner is Crystal Betsy, and she is a contract planner for the city. And. So could we receive the report of this project from you?
Absolutely, thank you Chair and members of, members of the commission. As mentioned, my name is Crystal and I'm the project planner that is, will be presenting to you this evening. So let's go ahead and get started. So I'm going to begin by, for the benefit of the commission as well as the public in attendance this evening, I'm going to start by providing an overview of the planning commission's role at tonight's hearing. Following that, I will provide a brief presentation of the proposed project, the design review board's recommendation, public comments that we have received to date, the project's consistency with applicable guidelines and standards, and will conclude with a recommendation and discussion of some notable conditions of approval. So at tonight's hearing, the role of the commission is to consider whether the project is consistent with the applicable regulations, guidelines, and standards, taking into consideration the analysis that's contained in the staff report, the staff and applicant presentations, and any public comments that are received. If appropriate, the commission should revise proposed conditions included as exhibits one and two, or add any conditions that may be deemed necessary. Staff would like to note that under Government Code Section six, five, five, eight, nine point five, when a housing development project complies with objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards, including any design review standards, the project cannot be denied nor conditioned to be of a lower density unless there is substantial information demonstrating that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, and that there are no feasible methods that would mitigate those impacts. So as proposed, the project would demolish the existing bowling alley and associated site improvements, and would construct seventy-four-sale condo units, which is inclusive of six low-income units. As mentioned, the units will be provided in fourteen separate buildings, which are comprised of six different building types, containing seven plan types that range from one to three bedrooms. The base density at the site is fifty-nine units, and the project is providing the six affordable units, which is ten percent of the total base density. And as such, the project is now, is then eligible for a twenty percent density bonus, so twelve units, and that is how the seventy units is being achieved. Outdoor amenities and open space are proposed throughout the project site, and there are two vehicular access points, including one on each project frontage, so both Vivian Street and Belvedere Street. As described in detail in, in your staff report and supporting materials, the project meets all the applicable objective development standards, except that we would like to note that under state density bonus law, the applicant is able to request waivers from development standards. So the project is requesting waivers to increase the height of the buildings above the permitted maximum height of thirty feet, and is also eliminating the requirement for a community or recreational center building, which would otherwise be required as part of the city's subdivision ordinance. In addition to the requested waivers, we would also like to note that the project is subject to a lower parking ratio, again, because of state density bonus law, and the ratios are detailed on your staff report, excuse me, in your staff report on page two. The project was reviewed by the city's design review board in December twenty twenty-one. That hearing was continued to March, and then at the March meeting, the DRB did recommend approval of the project with three conditions, including those related to improving the building entrances along Vivian Street, modification of the proposed materials planter boxes also along Vivian Street, and then relocation of one of the open space areas, which is located immediately adjacent to building nine. And the board had recommended that it be moved between buildings eleven and twelve. The former two conditions have been added as conditions of approval, however, the latter was not included because the applicant has determined that it would be infeasible, and they will discuss that later on in their presentation. Comments and questions received to date primarily relate to the inclusionary housing requirement. That was mostly questions that individuals had about what the requirement was and how the project was meeting that, as well as concerns and questions about parking and traffic. I would like to highlight traffic here because I know that is a, is a major concern to the community. And then just want to mention that as, as detailed in the staff report, there was a traffic analysis that was done, and it reviewed the traffic that would be generated by the proposed housing project as it compares to the existing bowling alley, bowling alley on site, as there are already trips associated with people coming and going from that site, and so the analysis looks at what is the, the difference between those two. So as detailed in your staff report and exhibit five specifically, the project is consistent with the applicable general plan policies, including those related to the project being compatible with surrounding development, both in design and use, and including any necessary buffers, such as landscaping or, or fencing, as well as policies that seek to provide more housing options, including for sale and affordable units, design-related policies, and policies that aim to increase housing density. Would also like to note that the project would contribute to the city's share of regional housing needs allocation by providing both market rate and low-income units. And in addition, the project site is identified as a housing opportunity site in the city's housing element. With the exception of the aforementioned waivers, the project meets all of the applicable standards and regulations in the city's zoning and subdivision ordinances. And as a discretionary action, the project is subject to review under the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. And it has been determined that it is categorically exempt under class thirty-two, which is applicable to infill development projects. So based on the project's consistency with the applicable guidelines, regulations, and standards, staff is recommending that the commission approve the requested use permit, environmental and design review, and tentative subdivision map applications with conditions as presented in exhibits one and two. I would also like to mention that the commission has the option to approve the project, project with any additional modifications, can continue the hearing to date certain or uncertain, or deny the project if substantial evidence demonstrates that, as proposed, the project would result in adverse impacts to public health or safety. I would like to point out a couple of conditions that, that do need some revisions, and I do apologize for these errors. The first one is in exhibit one, and it's use permit condition five. So it should just be revised to eliminate their requirement, the requirement for city council approval of the BMR agreement. This project is not subject to approval by the city council, so it would just be city approval, and as you'll know, it's. It would be at the same time that the final map is approved. And then the other one is environmental and design review condition one. This was an error on my part, and again, I do apologize, that was a carryover from another project. It's a standard condition of approval, that's essentially just saying what it is that we're approving. And so that just needs to be revised to reflect the, the subject project. And then finally, I would like to point out use permit condition forty-five D. This is mostly just a clarification point. It's discussing the undergrounding of the overhead utility lines along Belvedere Street, however, I would like to make a revision to that condition to, to specify that those are actually proposed for removal, and so then any that are not removed would need to be undergrounded. That is a condition from the city's Department of Public Works, so just wanted to point those few out. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I know that was brief, but obviously, if there's any questions for me, feel free to ask, and I'm going to switch over to the applicant's presentation. Just a moment.
Thank you, Crystal. We'll now hear from Matt, as you mentioned. All right. Please go ahead, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
No problem. I'm Matt Ashton, president of Ashton Three. And Crystal, I wanted to thank you. A great introduction and great job on your part, as always. And good evening to the esteemed members of the planning commission. I'm joined here on this call by A3's honors Taylor and Colin Ashton, our architectural team of William Hasma-Holch, which is comprised of Denise Ashton and Mike Cantrell, Meryl Patel of Studio Pad, our landscape architect, and Ryan Bitner, who is our civil engineer to help assist in answering any questions you may have for us at the end. On behalf of our entire team, we do appreciate the opportunity, and we're very excited to present to you tonight this new seventy-unit for-sale residential development. Chris was on a great job outlining and covering most of the material that I will be discussing to tonight, but I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on the continuity of the project design, DRB's influence, and how we incorporated their recommendations and suggestions, and ultimately, how this project fits with California's new housing crisis and needs throughout the state of California. So as we only have ten minutes, as, as the city has, has requested, and I keep it short and brief, I'll try to just jump, dive right into this thing as, as best as possible here. I want to do a broad brush of the constraints that we were faced with the beginning of this project, and just how we've kind of overcame and, and where we are today. The first constraint would be this project is mapped in the AE flood plain zone, which if you looked at the FEMA maps, it categorizes the entire canal district as being encumbered by the zone, which was put in place to ensure that each new development would be protected by the rising sea level and/or the hundred-year flood. Throughout process of the city, we were able to satisfy this condition by removing any ground floor habitable space and lifting it to the second and third levels of our project. Constraint two was fire access, as you guys know the area very well, and you've seen the site and walked the site, we know that the site's bounded by two long major thorough, one thoroughfare, one long street of Vivian and Belvedere, which already inherently provides adequate fire access to the site, as is through constant talks and collaborations with the fire chief, Mr. Roberts Knott, and the building official, Mr. Don Jepson. We were able to increase the center drive out throughout the project, if you're looking at the site plan.
Sorry, Mr. Ashton, sorry to interject, but do you have a site plan as part of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Crystal, can you go to the next, the next slide? Next one down, there we go. So you can see, this was the first site plan that we brought to DRB. You see the main drive all the way across through countless works as I, as I get through my presentation, you'll see the difference, but one of the main constraints was fire access as they entered off of Vivian, there is a, there is a turning radius point that the fire truck couldn't come in and turn adequately enough to serve buildings one hundred on the south side, at the same time serving building four hundred. And if there is a blockage somewhere in the way, and they, they couldn't access that, we ran into issues of alternative suggestions of where they'd come. But working, working with the fire chief and the building official, we were able to adjust the westernmost building type, which is building one hundred, and you'll see on the next slide here, once we get to it. That allows fire trust access.
Sorry to interject one more time, I think you had a, a slide previous to this, it was an aerial image, I'll give you more time to present, so if you would, I'm just coming back to that aerial image, so we could take a look.
Okay, so this is just an aerial view of the entire site. I'm aware you guys know this canal district very well. We've outlined it here with the black dotted lines and the highlighted pink. So we're about a seven iron to the water. And we're close to all local amenities, and we're, we're smack dab into an area that is in dire need of for-sale housing, which I would cover later in the presentation. So Crystal, can you go next slide, and then probably the next slide to show the updates? So the third, the third constraint was the secondary access point. I've got my zoom thing covered in here, here we go. So now you see the accent point has shifted strictly out, directly out to Belvedere as well as Vivian. And you can see we adjusted the westernmost, which is now a building five hundred on the western side. And we shaved off a unit to add more of a pocket park, which allows the fire truck access to make that turning radius and still have access, so it doesn't, it doesn't cause a collision with the building structures. So not only does it, I think, or do we believe that it serves fire better, but it, it's, it's a more circulated feel throughout the community. Now that the constraints are out of the way, I don't want to harp too much on those, as that's not the primary focus of the project. I want to jump into our initial hearings with DRB and want to mention what their concerns and recommendations were. As, as Crystal touched on earlier, I'll just reiterate what she had said, what their recommendation concerns were. There were enhanced entry rates, they wanted a, a different material for the planter boxes out front of the project on Vivian. If you've seen the landscape plans, and you've seen, we have zoomed images later on, but they want a different material for the project boxes, and one of the main comments was they didn't want skateboarders to come in and, and grind on them. So they wanted to give it a more comfortable feel and match it towards what the building's articulations material was in the stucco. They wanted more resident amenities, usable open space, as well as added landscaping throughout the site. So as you see the site plan in front of you, what we were able to do with the resident amenities and usable open space is it's kind of hard to dictate and show a comparison of what the first site plan was to what we're looking at now. The site before this was the previous, and then we've added, we made modifications to our site plan now. So on the western side, we added to building five hundred, you'll see a little pocket park that allows amenities, that allows neighbors to come in and kind of congregate and, and sit down at their leisure and just kind of do whatever they want. Gives them more openness at the, at the entrance of the community of Vivian, which we think adds another benefit to everybody. The second portion of, of increasing and adding value to the open spaces, we increased the center open, the primary open space, which is in between the two building one hundreds. We've increased that immensely, added square footages, DRB wanted to see a little bit more, more amenity tailored towards kids and families, and, and if I brought my five-year-old here, how do I entertain him? So we had a little jungle gym there, the Southernly property boundary line, added a little fake AstroTurf, or I guess real AstroTurf, fake turf area to this, to this spot where you want to bring your dog, or you want to just roll around and I don't know, wrestle, sit down, get some rays you can. Added a pergola with some barbecues and some benches that enables and promotes a more community feel to have everybody kind of come together as a, as a community, host a family gathering, host a, host a community barbecue, whatever it may be, and they can do so on their own, on their own backyard, essentially. The other DOB request is it's kind of spread out this open space throughout the project as a whole. So in comparison to the previous plan that you saw on the previous slide, there were four or five parking spots installed. DRB suggested, since we didn't need the extra additional guest parking, that they wanted to see more open space and wanted it to, to, to allow the residents to enjoy more space than not just their backyards or the primary spot, so we did away with that guest parking and added open space there. And then if you go more towards the east, all the way down to Belvedere, I think is our most creative component of the project, is we're able to modify that existing building type and really tailor it towards that young professional and make it the one-bedroom units, but at the same time, add a softer feel, if you're going to come or go along Belvedere, that allows the residents, if you're going to catch an Uber, if you're going to go take an Uber or Lyft down to downtown San Francisco, or wherever you may be going, that you can order the Uber or the Lyft, and at the ease of, of kind of their expertise and their drivers, you can sit out here on the tables and wait, and, and, and not feel sketchy and not feel, not feel that you're standing in the middle of the night by yourself next to somebody's home, but you're standing in your community at a park that promotes exactly that. Again, one of the, one of the DRBs' suggestions was to add chess and checker tables to some of these picnic tables that we have plotted here, and that's what's going to be shown, and that's what we're going to do. We just, it's going to be more of a, more of an intimate feeling for the residents that live here. And the last was the landscaping throughout the site, Chris, if you want to go to the next, the next slides, here's an enhancement of our open space and landscaping that we're providing. You can see throughout the project, we've added not only more open space, but we've added a lot more greenery, we've added the larger trees, the larger bushes, the larger shrubs. And we've added, added garden walls and, and more of a a softer feel, one of the comments that, that the DRB was harping on was, if I'm a resident here and I step out of my front door, and I go to my community and I walk, and I want to walk three doors down to my neighbor, what am I walking out to? It is just concrete and alleyways, not lit up, dark. And we took that to heart, and, and we were able to come to the drawing board and added a lot more greenery, more streets, which are, hey, I'm sure you guys are aware of what those are, but you walk out and it feels it's a softer landscape. Just a more, more community intimate feel of sense of being home. Nobody wants to act like they're walking down a street to get to their neighbors, it's, it's actually you're walking through your, you're walking through your community that you're so proud of. Kind of feel. Yeah, Chris, if you want to go to the next couple of slides here, you could. You can see the visuals a lot more clear, I think, when, when we're showing it, if it's looking a little distorted, I apologize. But with that being said, we, we were able to incorporate all of DRB's recommended modifications, except for one, as Crystal touched base on earlier, was, I'm sorry, Crystal, previous slide, two slides. That pocket park that you see there on building two hundred, on building number nine, Chris is going to circle there. DRB recommended that they wanted to see it more centralized and kind of put it in between building eleven and twelve. And as, as much as we would like to do that and wish we could have done it, the Southernly property boundary line there off building seven, eight, and nine, as Chris was kind of outlining there, there's a jog in that southern boundary line that protrudes into our site that just didn't make it feasible to do so, it would have pushed our buildings more into the street, and it, it would have caused a whole different sort of problems for fire and the building officials, so we felt it best to accompany their decision to adding more open space, but at the same time leaving it where, where it was. I guess this is great, because I'm just going to talk about the site plan, Chris, so we can keep it here. So with our different creative alternative site plans, I think this was our fourth or fifth redesign, I don't know if Crystal wants to correct me on that. But we got very creative, and we think that our site plan and the product type caters to that segment of the market who are very fortunate enough to live in this area in the Canal District, and just kind of down in the Samuelville area, who may be priced out of the surrounding areas. That lends the opportunity to live in a more vibrant, yet urban setting, but still be able to work and commute in the downtown area. Future residents will have access to hundreds of local amenities and is in very close proximity to all major airports and job hubs. And again, we feel this project fits perfectly in this district, which this district is trying to promote and pushing more, more housing, more, more, more communities, more for-sale housing at that. More communities, more fail for sale housing at that. Chris, if you can go just kind of scroll through the next couple of slides, I want to show the commission just kind of how the the. You can see the elevations of the site. It's 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 got a very urban feel. Yet very welcoming and comforting from a street scene perspective. As you drive down Vivian. I'm sure you guys have been down in this area. You all have been down in this area and seen what it is today. We think this is just going to give this entire area a facelift. Lack of lack of a better better terminology for it, but we do believe that it's the perfect catalyst for future projects down in this area and. Hopefully this project can be the nerve star for future developments that this area so badly wants and needs. Chris, if you want to just kind of keep scrolling through a couple of these other elevations that we have. You can see what it's going to look like. This is this is face. This is on a Belvedere looking west. It's kind of the same art articulation along Vivian. One of DRB's comments, you can see the front doors there with the guy in the in the beautiful pink shirt standing. Yeah, standing there. One of the D R B's comments was they want to kind of see an enhancement of that front door and make it feel like a front door. Our thought process was keep it urban, keep it, keep it unique. But that's one of the conditions that we're going to go ahead and kind of do some improvement. Let's do some. Some decorative tile around or. Or whatever needs to be the kind of show. I mean, we're going to show address, address tiles on there as well to to make it clear that if you're dropping somebody off at. A particular address, you don't come up to a to a community where you have to drive in and then just say, where do I go? Chris, if you want to keep, if you want to keep going. Here's another internal community. This is on Belvedere. This is that pocket area that I said that you can wait for your Uber. Sit down on the on the nice couches there while you wait, well lit. Street lights, a bunch of vegetation, a bunch of trees. And you feel like you're you're standing as is. I don't know if I'm hitting my hitting my 10 minutes, but now that we all have a clear vision of. Of kind of how and why this project was designed. I I do feel it's extremely important to mention that this project. Is not only going to be an asset to this neighborhood, but is also consistent with each development standard outlined in the city's zoning code and general plan to a T. Utilizing the state density program and and meeting all the requirements. We believe, or it is. Meets exactly every code to a T. And with the updated housing element that you guys have adopted from 2015, though I believe it's 2023, Chris will correct me if I'm wrong. But it does identify this entire canal district as a point of emphasis throughout the city as an opportunity zone. Which which greatly stresses the need for new for sale housing. So not only does I doesn't meet your new housing element, it meets every development standard. And hopefully, hopefully, it's the nerve star moving forward of. What the city should and should expect from developers coming through and trying to develop new housing sites. With that, I think I'd like to wrap it up. I think I touched base on. Most everything we needed to do. If any of my team wants to interject and finish it off, feel free to do so, but. I think I've, I think I've taken twice the amount of time that I've allotted for, but. Again, we have our whole team on the call. So if we have any public comments or any comments from. From the planning commission, we have more than capable hands to answer those. So thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Mr. Ashton, appreciate it. Okay, so now. We'll ask for questions. From the commission of staff or the applicant. So feel free to. Signal a favor question or just go ahead and ask the question. Commissioners. Any questions?
Actually, Chair Privatali, I do have a couple of questions. One, one has to do with with parking. Am I right that all of the two or three bedrooms have a two car garage? And the one bedrooms have a one car garage?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and and we think that's sufficient?
Well, I guess that's, you know, I don't know that I can say, you know, what is and what is not sufficient, but the density bonus ratios are less than what the city. You know, city kind of requirement what it would be. You will see on the table, I don't know if this is helpful, but in the table that we provided in the staff report, using the ratios from state density bonus law. That would require 105 spaces because the the two to three bedroom units require one 1.5 parking spaces. But they're providing 136, so. I don't know if that's helpful, but.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. Thank you. Yeah. And and just a question, traffic into and out of the complex. Onto Vivian and Belvedere. It was noted, yeah, I don't, the the number of trips that that are planned in and out of there seems reasonable to me. What I was really struck by was how there could only be one more AM trip. Out of the complex than there is currently. And and what what constitutes AM? Is that everything before noon?
Right, so the AM, not before noon, I can let me pull up the, I have the traffic study here, if you'll give me just a second. But it is a specific time and it's associated with the commute, the commute and school drop off time. And they, I I mean, I'm sure that you're aware of this, but they use the the published rates from the I T E manual, so the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Which comes up with whatever ratio it is for, you know, the bowling alley and then the ratio for, which is. Maybe not necessarily always reflective of on the ground conditions, but that's how they came up with those changes. But let me just see if I can find that. Give me just a second. Too many files open. PDF is trying to crash. I can find it and then follow up with you in just a couple of minutes if that's okay.
That 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 will be fine. And I'm curious as to what what accounts for all of the AM trips out of there currently. If you don't have an answer off the top of your head, that's that's fine too.
I don't, yeah.
Okay, and and I just wanted to clarify, we're, are we granting waivers now for both the the height? And and the emission of the community center?
Correct, yeah. So that would be as part of this, part of the project and just to, and I can maybe have Leslie jump in. With this, because I think her knowledge of density bonus is a little bit better than mine, but from what I understand. Waivers and concessions are different, so they did not need to do a pro forma for any of the waivers that they were requesting. They can essentially just request. A waiver and then it, you know. Unless we can, unless there's a good reason that we can find to not grant it, then we're, you know, kind of limited in that in that ability to to not allow it.
Correct, I'm just going to emphasize that the waivers are part and parcel of the density bonus project and are pretty much allowed by right to accommodate the affordable housing project.
Okay, great. And that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Great. I have a few, I have a couple of questions and, you know, this is more just informational for me. Because I realize this, I'm in favor of this project and. They're conforming obviously to. But I'm wondering, Crystal or or Leslie, if we have. If you, if you could sort of give us an idea of where the closest public transportation hub is. Like bus stop or whatnot, and also where the. Closest park and community center is, just sort of understand how. Amen is. Do you have a sense of that?
Sure. So the bus stop, I can answer. So there is one that, so this came up when we were discussing with Public Works. Regarding frontage improvements, because the the tentative map kind of opens up that opportunity for. For the city to ask for any sort of frontage improvements, but frontage improvements that are requested have to be within the context of the adopted. You know, documents that we have. So one of the things that Public Works had recommended was, you know, maybe let's put in a bus stop. And so we had kind of looked at. Where the surrounding bus stop. So there is one just around the corner on Canal Street. I can actually just share my screen if that's helpful to kind of visualize here. So. I'm sorry, I actually don't know if I shared the right one. Screen two. Can you see this Google Maps? Okay, thank you, thank you. So here's the site. And then here is this bus stop over here on Canal Street. There's also one on Mill Street and it looks like they're servicing a handful of routes. So that was something we looked at. There is a a specific document for the canal district and there's, you know, it like breaks up the canal into kind of different areas and there there's some policy direction on. Establishing like linear pathways and parks and that sort of thing. But then in terms of the nearest park, I would say probably Pickleweed is the closest. So it's not. I wouldn't say it's exceptionally close in terms of if you're thinking about, you know, a standard person of a standard ability and then thinking, you know, obviously of people with. With disabilities and that sort of thing. It's not, I wouldn't say like in that close of proximity to where it's. You know, you could get there in quarter mile or because I think the quarter and half mile are sort of the. The standard for how far people are sort of willing to walk. Obviously, there's people that will walk a mile to get somewhere and some that won't walk that much, so. I'm not sure if that helps.
Yeah, no, that's great. That helps. And I know that there's a very vibrant community center there at Pickleweed that. And just one more question, Leslie, I think this one is for you. We have, didn't we receive a a grant to? Do some redevelopment planning for the canal?
We did not receive that funding, however.
Oh, we didn't.
We are going to apply again and have a better chance this time because. One of the criteria is how long you've been in kind of waiting for the funding. So we were new last time, so we have a year behind her. So we're hoping for it. We're going to be applying again.
Okay, okay. I mean, I would be great, obviously. It'd be great if we could incorporate some more parks nearer to this development and at least one park. You know, I could, as Crystal mentioned. Situation down there through Sunday. So then we. When the time comes. Well, thank you. Any last questions from the commission?
Yeah, I have, yeah, Chair, I have a couple of questions. This is Commissioner Mercado. One, are are these condominiums? Okay. And then two, has there been any community engagement or community meetings regarding this project?
There have not been, no, just the, there was, so there was conceptual design review in 2019. Which was, it was a different applicant substantially similar project in terms of number of units, general layout. You know. Open space, that sort of thing. And then there was. DRB in December of 2021 and then DRB in March of 2022. And then, you know, just kind of general public comments and coordination. There was someone who called me from the. Gas station that was kind of adjacent to it. It was actually the friend of the person that owned the gas station and had some questions about. Just redevelopment in that area and opportunities for, you know, the the project to potentially provide EV. Charging stations and some kind of coordination with that, but aside from that, there's been no other, there were no neighborhood meetings or anything held.
And then is the site gated? I can tell from the site plans, like, is it going to be fenced off?
No, so there is a fence along the. Along the, actually here, let me just pull up the plan so I can show it to you. So it's not gated on the on the Vivian street side. There is. A CMU wall along the, I guess that would be the eastern property line because there are some auto uses between those two. So along this portion of the property, there's going to be. A wall dividing that. And then there's a couple of walls between. These units and I think some right here to attenuate noise between the. The roadway and the public open or the, sorry, the private open space here. But aside from that, it's not a gated and there's there's no fences or anything.
Okay, okay. And then I know they didn't have to do the, we're doing the waiver or the bonus, but there was no pro forma, but. Do we have any idea what the price point may be for? The non affordable housing units for sale?
I I do not know that would, I think that would be a question for the applicant potentially. I don't know if they would know either. So Matt, if you want to jump in on that one.
Is it low? I'm sorry, is it low income?
No, the non those to the market rate housing, if we have any idea. Yeah, could be potentially going for.
So, yeah, Mr. Mercado, this is Matt again. Just to justify that, yeah, we have these plans. And again, market rate is always dictated by what the market is wanting and seeing. But we have the three story townhomes raising ranging anywhere from the eights maybe to the nines. Again, it's all dictated by what sells and what the buyer is wanting to buy in this area. And then to touch base on your initial comment, the business gated. That was kind of the initial intent of the project that we wanted to do. We were, we were directed to not through the city, so. See if we can answer both those questions. My one comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
That's it for now. Thank you.
The only thing I'll add is I I noticed in the agenda packet that there was. Notice a public hearing mailed. To to. Foot raised radius. So I don't know if. Helped to switch some of your concerns, Commissioner Mercado. Seems like a little spin location that went out to the neighbors. Commissioner Saudi, go ahead.
Yeah, I had really a question for Crystal or Leslie. I noticed in the packet that we're the agenda packet received. Most of the correspondence has really questions about the project. There was no real feedback. Did we get any other written feedback or calls or, you know, are we just expecting to hear public feedback in this in this public hearing?
Yeah, so I can answer that. There were no public comments really received. There were a few comments received at. The design review board hearings. But a lot of them, as I'm sure you can understand, because the public doesn't always know what the purview of design review board is, and that's totally fine. There were a couple of comments received about traffic and concerns about intersections sort of in the area and just their their. Low level of operation and some concerns about emergency and, you know, emergency evacuations if those were to occur. And so we tried to address those in the staff report, you know, with the. The traffic analysis and that and that sort of thing, this, the city, I as I'm sure this board knows, because you guys have probably seen it, is that the general plan was adopted recently. I think August of last year or the year before. And so there was an E I R that was prepared as part of that and. Unfortunately, it's kind of just this area is is encumbered like a lot of, a lot of the Bay Area and a lot of the city. And so it's. It was just acknowledged that those those intersections were going to operate unacceptably in the terms of the level of service and the delay operation and that sort of thing. So those, a couple of those comments were received at at DRB. But aside from that, yeah, just, you know, questions. And I do apologize if it was inappropriate to include the questions as part of the packet, but. The long history of the project. So, but yeah, aside from that, no, no real comments that I've received, you know, via phone call or. Or email. I was in touch with a couple of members of the Neighborhood Association. And so I'm not sure if they're in attendance this evening. They may want to provide some comments. But yeah, that's sort of, sort of what I've, my experience has been with the project.
Okay, great. And then the other question I had was regarding safety on the site. We know that like, I mean, when we reviewed other sites on this, in the canal area around this area, not necessarily more towards. The housing, there's, you know, obviously. Concerns about safety because there's a lot of people going in and out of that, you know, more commercial zone throughout the day. And night. So with the open central. Driveway and then some of those parks, like, how is applicant addressing? You know, public safety and the safety of the residents within that area between buildings and.
Right, so I can all all kind of start with some, you know, some of my thoughts on that. And then if the applicant team wants to jump in. They're welcome to do that. So one thing is just through lighting. And then I think the other big thing about this project is that it does have kind of that eyes on the street element of it where. The majority of the parking is in, you know, is not facing the public right of way. And so you're not putting a use that is inherently less. Activated, I guess you could say, so. activated, I guess you could say. So there's those kind of open balconies on the second floor. Obviously, I know that doesn't deter, you know, all safety issues, but I think it does help in that sort of idea that when, when people are activating public spaces, there's, there's less likelihood that that, that some of that activity may go on. So those are kind of my initial thoughts, but Matt or anybody else from the applicant team, if you want to tack on to that, you're welcome to.
Yeah, very well said. Those were my initial two points. I guess the only thing I can elaborate on that is every new community is going to be predisposed of whatever's going on in their current neighborhoods that they're living in. And I will say to Crystal's point, you do want to have that community feel, which is why we kind of added the landscape and just the, the internal local amenities that you want that sense of community that everybody has eyes on each other and everyone looking out for each other's backs. Can I say what, what, what the exterior public may or may not do? I, I can't speak to that, but I will say we've done countless photometric plans, which are lighting studies of the entire community and how it's going to look like from the outside as well as internally. And it's going to be well lit and all the balconies and adjacent entrances to the homes, they're going to be well lit, well monitored and hopefully it deters any outside interference, but.
Yeah, that's great. I think they actually, projects like this will actually help the community be safer and provide more of a neighborhood feel. So I just was wondering how that was addressed because it's not really, it's not really part of the plan, the packet, but it was just out of curiosity.
Yeah, yeah, very valid. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any more questions? Okay, great. Excellent. Let's move on to any comments from the public. Leslie, do we have any members of the public?
Yeah, so if you're dialing in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, use the, use the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And Melanie Stein, first team. Melanie, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Great. My name is Melanie Stein. I'm calling in in support of the project. I was born and raised in San Rafael and I'm really excited to see more housing, especially housing for purchase coming up in this area. I actually think the design is really well done. It looks like it really fits in with the vibe of San Rafael. Very tasteful. I'm very excited to see the landscaping and that there's not so much on-street parking. All the off-street parking is a great amenity. I encourage you guys to approve the project as proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. The next speaker is Jerry Di Pietro. There you have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. My name is Jerry Di Pietro. I own the building across the street on Vivian Street. My father was one of the original developers down there. We actually donated what became Vivian Street or what is to the county because when the bowling alley was built, they landlocked themselves and didn't have access to that parking lot. I'm speaking tonight just because I'm a little concerned about not enough visitor parking and that I may have to take some changes for my parking lot to keep overflow people from coming in and taking our customer parking. So that's one thing that I see as, as kind of lacking in this project. Thank you so much.
Okay, Jerry. If anyone else wishes to speak on this project, please press star nine if you are dialing in or use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. You all a few seconds. And no one else wishes to speak.
Okay, great. Well, at that, at this point, we will close the public hearing. And we'll return to the admission for any follow-up questions. I will call each, on each commissioner individually to find out if you have other questions. So Commissioner, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mercado?
Thanks. Yeah, I guess. The visitor, a couple of things, the visitor parking, parking overall, I mean, the canal is super impacted. And this is a pretty high density use in the area. Garages for the units. So one of the things that was jumping out at me was just this area seems to have a lot of multi-generational housing with very high use in each unit. So one thought was whether these would be owner occupied or if these are going to be rented, that's going to enhance that. I didn't realize how much the visitor parking, what the space allocation was. Is that in the staff report?
Number of parking spaces are, is in the staff report?
Yeah, I saw the total. I didn't see if there was a breakdown.
I recall seeing visitor parking here.
There is not and that, and Leslie, maybe you can jump in if I get this wrong, but I, the reason for that is because it's a state density bonus or a project utilizing state density bonus. It's not, it's subject to different parking ratios. And so it sort of gets rid of that, that visitor parking. I completely understand the concern as well. And I, I realize that's challenging when you kind of have, you know, kind of conflicting, but that's, that's why it's not in there. If it, I don't know that it would be helpful, but I'd be happy to look up the code section for you that would list that visitor parking, but I don't know that that's really that relevant at this point, but happy to do it if it helps.
No, thank you. I mean, I think the difficulty here as a planning commissioner is that we're so constrained by state requirements, right? So the applicants utilizing the site the best they can and what the state's asking for. What's jumping out at me is just that there is a parking issue that's unique to this area that isn't a codified issue, right? The state, state has no idea. We know what it is, but really there's not much we can do. There's going to be an impact, in my opinion, to the community when the site goes up. Not at the fault of the applicant, but just the fact that this community is severely in need of additional resources. So that's, that's the inherent challenge that I just feel like as a commissioner, I need to put on the record to say that's going to be a problem we're going to face once this is up and running. The, and, and those owners living there are going to deal with that. The adjacent owners are going to deal with that. And I've been involved in many projects where that's just a common issue. So what I would hope is just we keep that in mind for the collective good of this area, that that's just something we're going to have to deal with. But again, I don't think we can, we can't condition the site, we can't restrain it. It's just, it is what it is. So that, that was sort of just the one visitor question. Chair, do you want just questions for now or general feels? What would you like in this part of the discussion?
Yeah, this one is still questions and then we'll move on to discussion after that. So we finish just kind of going around the rock, around, being around Robin. And we'll move on to discussion.
One more on the affordable housing. I don't know if it's in the site plan or not. Are they designated? Do we know where those units will be?
They are designated, yes. And there, I'm sure, as you know, there's in the code, there, it talks about the unit mix and location. So that would be approved through the BMR agreement. That would happen later, but certainly if you, I mean, I know that we're not at the comment stage right now, but if you had comments about the location and distribution of the unit types on those, I think that both the city and the applicant would be, would be happy to hear those. But yeah, so those are, those are noted, I think, on the site plan. It's like the second or third page of the, of the plan set.
Okay.
And Commissioner Mercado, I wanted to mention, I, you had a question about, about the guest parking. Throughout the four or five iterations of our site plan that we've gone through the city with adding open space or a lot of our different iterations had guest parking included and we, we were trying to appease each department, whether it's public, for fire, building officials and, and, and planning altogether. We ended up losing guest parking that was previously offered to accommodate everybody's recommendations and suggestions and ultimately why we settled on this final plan. But that was in our minds and, and, and that was initially offered and ultimately we ended up on additional open space as opposed to, as opposed to parking. So.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sumitji, do you have any questions?
No, I think that the, at a high level, I mean, I'm probably uncharacteristically silent because I don't think there's from our standpoint, I don't think there's much that we can really have the scope to, to affect here since they, they really check all the boxes. I think the, the issue that Commissioner Mercado raised is a very interesting one. And Leslie, I'm, I'm wondering in what capacity can we push this point of discussion up to city council? Because I do think that there are some local, local discussions. I don't know if they need to be codified, but certainly considerations that need to be made about particularly redevelopment in this particular area and how we can address the parking situation. Because I think we need to have a more high-level strategic resolution to this so that we're not pushing it on individual developers to like, you know, have to rectify what is an urban planning issue in this area.
So I think that if we receive the funds to pursue a, you know, to, to have a PDA for the Canal District and pursue a specific plan, that will go far in looking at it kind of holistically, what needs to happen. Unfortunately, with, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, I think density bonus is actually a really great tool. But it does constrain cities, not just planning commissions, but councils as well. And as you know, balancing parking with housing with open space, there's never enough land for everything we want. So so the state has taken that choice out and has limited our ability for parking.
Well, I would just, I would, I would. I would also make a point that in, in Marin's particular case, you know, not to, not to knock on the sacred cow, but in Marin's particular case, we have eighty-three percent of our land, which is allocated to open space. So when we talk about space issues, especially like this, it does seem a bit absurd that we're going to hold on to allocating so much space when, you know, we have real people whose lives are being impacted and our ability to make good on this idea of like, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion in particular in the community. You know, if we're really prioritizing open space and having eighty-three percent of it to, for people to go on walks when we, we have this, you know, I mean, some questions need to be asked and voiced publicly. I don't know if anything goes from it, but we need to raise that as a, as a serious point that we should discuss as a community.
Thanks for those comments. Do you have any more questions?
No, I think if we, you know, I think Leslie sort of laid out where we could potentially go with that. So I think that answers my question.
Chair Privatoli, I do want to mention that you skipped over Commissioner Haven.
Yeah, no, I'm not done yet. So and I think I, I'm not sure if I asked Commissioner Saudi if she had any questions. Mary, are you calling you?
No, I, I, you know, I, I think that I, I don't know if I have questions as much as, you know, really reiterating what Chair Sumitji and, and Chair Mercado have mentioned. I think, you know, we do and, you know, aside from this, you know, contextually this, with this project, I think is achieving is creating, you know, much needed housing, but also hopefully starting a domino effect in that area and, you know, really opening the door for other developers to really invest in this community. I think we need to do it in a way that, you know, makes it equitable and allows a community to thrive and really address issues. Obviously, parking, if I'm sure as most of you have, if you've driven in there, through there on, in the morning or evening when people are not at work anymore, it's, it's really jam-packed. And also for, you know, climate change, and I know we're looking at, you know, some, some ways to mitigate that in the canal right now, but you know, these are, this, this community really creates a sense of culture for, it's a really strong cultural beacon for San Rafael. And I think we need to make sure that as it grows and as it evolves, that we're, we're really looking out for the best interest of the community. And, you know, we're, we're having a larger conversation around what's best for it and how we can continue to encourage really the vibrancy that, that exists there without like, you know, sorry, bolstering it up without removing the, the vibrancy that exists and the fabric that exists. I don't know if that was as eloquent as I would have wanted to say, but I hope you get the point.
Makes sense. Okay, last but not least, Commissioner Haven.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so I, I want to echo the sentiments about parking. I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned and I hope that we can, we as a city can step back and, and, and try and address that because it's, it's, it's a big deal. And I'm also worried about, you know, ultimately how many people will live in, in this development. If it's comparable to the rest of the canal, then it will be more than two people with two cars in any unit. So that, that just fuels the, the parking concerns. My question though has to do with the affordable units. I, I found the, the diagram with them articulated and I, I love the fact they're spread throughout the community. I'm wondering, are they all one bedrooms or what's, what's the, the composition of the affordable units?
Yeah, so they are a mix. I can try, so it looks like there are, there's one, I might get this wrong. It's color-coded on the, on the plans. I'm sure it's listed somewhere. I can try to pull it up really quick, but I don't want to hold up the rest of the hearing trying to figure it out, but it looks like it's a mix of, it, it's a mix of all the types of units that are available. So one, two and three. And yeah.
Yep, I, I see it now. Yeah, and, and, and that's great. Thanks. Thanks very much.
Excellent, great, thank you. I, I have a question about parking. And it's on the, it's actually on the flip side. I'm, it's, it's, I'm sort of optimistic that parking may not be as big a problem because it's actually going into an area that has a lot of, that's mostly commercial now. Am I wrong about that? Is, is parking a problem in that particular part of the canal, particularly after business hours? This is a question for us later, for Crystal. But because of parking particularly.
I'm not, I, I don't really know if it's an issue after hours. I do know that when we did conceptual review back in twenty nineteen, which again, that was, you know, under a different developer and a slightly different design. There are a lot of auto uses that are on the eastern, kind of on the other side where the eastern property line is. And a couple of those business owners were concerned that, you know, just given the nature of the businesses that they do have, there are people that come and drop off their vehicles because they're having them serviced. And so that was a concern. But in terms of after hours, I don't really know if it's, if it's as much of the, of an issue. So that might be, you know, maybe someone that, that kind of spends a little bit more time down there, they could answer that question, but but yeah, I, I think in general, what I, the feedback I've gotten is that parking in the canal is just very impacted, so.
Yeah, I think if I can interject, Chair Privatoli, most of the people that live in that area need a car, need transportation to get to work. It's not like a lot of us who are able to take public transportation. And I also think that you know, there was a point that was brought up earlier that really we should remember from Commissioner Haven that, you know, that, you know, if we do the calculations per unit, it, it makes it, I, I felt the same way. It makes it look like we have a lot of parking. You know, like who's going to have three cars per unit, but we really think about how these units may potentially be occupied at a higher density than what the calculations show. You know, parking will be an issue. It's just, it is what it is. And I, you know, that, that parking lot for the bowling alley was huge. And it never, I, I never remember it like totally full. But they also had the indoor socket or the soccer, I don't know if it's indoor soccer or what, I don't forget what it's called. But that kept like a twenty-four But that kept like a twenty-four hour use on that site. So I wonder if that like really can, you know, knowing that, if that can really give us a sense of what, that what parking might be like for.
Great. Well, thank you, commissioners. We've sort of merged the questions with the discussion, but I'll just keep on going through the agenda. Excuse me, I'm kind of losing my voice. But at this point, staff, do you have any additional comment or advice for the mission about this project? I don't see any. Okay, great. And at this point, we'll ask the commissioners if they have any additional, any final comments. If you raise your hand.
I'll add a comment. I just want to say that I'm in support of this project. It really sad to see the bowling alley go. Had a lot of, I have young kids, so we've had a lot of good memories there. And I think it really was like a great community spot. And, you know, if it is to go, I think housing is the right thing to put there. We are in desperate need of it. And I think creating for cell housing in that area is great. I do hope that, you know, the larger discussions we have, that maybe can't be solved within the project. But, you know, it should be addressed by the city, continue to evolve and that we continue to address those issues. But overall, I think it's, it's a good project and will be good for the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or remarks?
Yeah, I have a couple. I appreciate everybody's comments and staff. Again, great job as always. This is, there's so much changing coming out with housing. So I appreciate that. And the applicant did a good job giving us an overview. I think it's, it's exciting. I, I was actually really torn about this project and I'll highlight why. For me, I think if this is sort of what could be the goal of changing this area that's blighted and needs, and needs help, that's really exciting. But if we are looking at almost million dollar price point units, which in our community, it's probably what it's going to be, that's also a different lens that's going to impact this already very stressed out community. And so for me, it's all about the messaging that goes into it. And what jumped out at me tonight was that there's no community here. We had two comments and as Commissioner Saudi said, there was just a handful of emails that came in that, it blows my mind. And I get it. It's equal exempt. So you're not going to have a scoping session. Chair, you raised the right points. All the DRB, all of that was agendized, I'm sure, language appropriate. But I just think if this is the anchor of what's going to be in the canal that it needs to be, because it needs housing, it needs community development. It's, it's sad that we don't have more of the community here to provide the input. So the developer can finalize the tweaks for the site to incorporate it into the community. And that's also what jumped out at me is I, I, I'm, I'm going to support this, but I don't think this site has any feel of the canal associated with it. And I know I'm not the DRB and I'm sure they did a great job, but I don't see this being sort of, it doesn't recognize the community of the canal. There's nothing there that shows me how it ties into it. It's a high density unit. It's going to be right where this old parking lot is. It's going to be a lot better than what it is now. But it's going to be its own somewhat distinct little micro community. So that's problematic in my mind, because I think if this is the direction we're going in, which is what we need to do, then we really need to think about engaging the community and incorporating these kinds of projects to feel as part of it. And again, we can't ask, I don't think we can ask applicants to do that. I think as a city, it's something we need to think about how to do. So that to me was a little bit of a heartbreak because I just didn't see that incorporation of it. And again, that's just something I think we need to figure out. The one thought more substantively on the parking is since we are approving a subdivision and there's going to be the drafting of CCNRs, what I would hope is that in those CCNRs, there's no parking restrictions. And by that, I mean, if we don't want to impact the neighbors where there's already going to be fights over parking, I'll put it on the record. Code enforcement be ready. Then let's make sure that as the CCNRs are drafted, through the approval of the city attorney and the planning department, that there's no other reduction in the ability to maximize the parking onsite, forcing people, especially multi-generational, multi-families, where you're right, this is going to be three plus cars. Because everybody needs a car to hit the construction site to go to the roadside spot or to go up north to work in, in the different ag industries. So that may be one way to reduce it, which is to not limit the onsite. I would, I would encourage that be something, again, it's nothing, it's not a condition of approval I can ask, but it's just a, a comment or something for the, for staff to consider. But again, overall, I mean, it's needed. So it's a step, it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Thank you for your comments. This all makes sense to me. Any more comments? Go ahead, Chairman or Commissioner Sumitji.
Leslie, are any of those questions that, that Commissioner Mercado raised actionable? I know that you, you referenced the, the grant, but so like, for example, looking at how the city can either facilitate or, or support community and being more engaged and involved in the process of inputs and engagement with developers for some of these, for some of these kinds of projects, I think that would, you know, be something that I think we could support even outside of that. Or, you know, at least start to think about how city might be involved in facilitating that.
With that out, I think there's the two kind of avenues for that one more formal through either specific plan policies and procedures, you know, resolutions from council that I think what has been discussed here has resonated with me. And I think staff and ourselves, and I don't mean Crystal, I mean me, can be more proactive in, in having neighborhood outreach sessions, even if it is not a requirement, because I think your comments have resonated very strongly with, with this planning manager. So thank you for those. And I've taken them in heart.
Cool. But yeah, I just want to, I just want to also reiterate to the applicant that this is not a reflection on their project at all. You know, there are a set of restraints that developers are under, both from a design perspective as well as a financial perspective. So I just want to, I just want to make it clear that this is not a pointed criticism at, at you guys whatsoever. But this is more of just sort of the system in which we're operating and your particular case just kind of provides a good opportunity to, to raise those points. But I think from the project itself, the merits, I think it's a, it's a very excellent project and it provides something that is needed to the community. So that is, is much appreciated.
And we appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Great points, Commissioner. Any more comments?
If, if I might, I want to, I want to echo most of what's been said, including the sadness of the, with, with regard to the departure of the bowling alley. It's a little bit of a landmark. But, but yeah, I, Commissioner Mercado, I really appreciate, appreciate your comments and the way you said it. And I won't try to, to, to parrot it or rephrase it. I just want to echo it. So thanks for that. Also want to echo that, yeah, I, I like this project. I think it's very well put together. It just has externalities on a community that's got really unique features. And that's, that's not, that's not your problem. That's our broader problem, problem.
Great. Thanks. I also echo all the comments. I guess, you know, if one thing we could do next time around is when we do community outreach, you know, send communications out in Spanish. It's a question for, did that happen or were, were the notices in English?
They were just in English. So yes, there are blind spots highlighted.
Yeah. Okay. And I mean, just I'm on the housing element right now. And also I have some experience. Actually, just through my mom mostly, who bought in a mostly Hispanic community in Mossinville, California for many years. She was a middle school teacher. Yeah, it's really hard to get people who are non-English speakers and people who are recent immigrants and non-citizens to participate. So it's, it's, we, I don't think we can just rely on mailers. Actually work with members of the community who are proactive liaisons, you know, to add community feedback on projects like this going forward. So some food for the... Okay, great. Well, since it doesn't look like we have any more discussion, I will entertain a, a motion to approve this. Does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. It was Commissioner Sumitji who made the motion and Commissioner Saudi who submitted it.
And can I clarify that the motion includes the corrections as highlighted by the staff planner?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Excellent. Leslie, would you mind taking your roll call?
I'd love to. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Haven?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumitji?
Yes.
Chair Saudi?
Yes.
And Chair Privatoli? As you go.
All right. Thanks, Leslie. Excellent. Thank you. And congratulations to the applicant and best of luck with the project. We'll now move on to the director's report. Leslie, would you mind giving us the report?
Yes. Thank you. So I am excited to announce that at our next meeting, we will have a new commissioner, Kelly Shock. So she did her orientation and her swearing in. She was unable to make it today. And so she will be there and we will have a meeting, which will be on the 24th. At that meeting, we will have the draft, I guess we can call it the SB nine ordinance or ordinance to implement provisions of SB nine. So I'm excited about that. And we will also have revisions to the rules and procedures to make the changes to reflect the streamlined DRB review for, for certain housing projects. And since our new commissioner will be there, I will also take the opportunity to elect the DRB or to parse out the DRB liaisons for the second half of the year. And I just get a, an inquiry by Commissioner Harris about what does that mean being the DRB liaison? And we can go over it next meeting, but it's my understanding you attend and comp and report back to the commission on any exciting developments. And as an attendance, you're just literally in attendance, not as a panel. But I'm also going to, you all have done it. So I don't know if you have anything more to say about being the DRB liaison than I just reported back.
Leslie, I've actually, didn't we put in our name for certain months that we were available a while back? Okay.
Yes. Yes. So we only, since we were down a commissioner, we only did the first six months. So I think with the exception of Commissioner Sumitji, who signed up for his two months right away, the rest of you have one month to go. So yes, you could leave early. And the other exciting thing, depending on your opinion, is that we will be starting hybrid meetings starting the second half of June. So DRB will be hybrid on June 21st and the first hybrid planning commission meeting will be June 28th. So that, actually I'm a little excited about that. So the expectation is that commissioners and staff, hopefully applicants will be present in person. Obviously, if there's, if there's a conflict, if you're feeling fine, that may be contagious. We, we don't want you there and we'll, we'll, we'll do something. We'll have you call in, just like Chair Privatoli did the other meeting from Texas. So, and that is what I have. And at the six fourteen meeting, it is the Brookdale project, which is on our major project webpage and it is ten units. And so it will also not just be our hybrid, no, this is the fourteenth, the one before the hybrid meeting, is going to be our first project with the streamlined DRB review. So we will have three, two representatives from DRB be at the hearing. And so we will go over that next meeting, but I'm letting you know, we'll kind of, it sounded great on paper, but I'm sure when we get there, there'll be a little kink. So we'll, we'll just work with it and go with it. So I think we'll have like a mini DRB and then switch it over to, they'll give the recommendation, then we'll switch it over to the planning commission for business as usual. So exciting changes ahead. And that's my director's report.
Great. Thanks, Leslie. All right. Now it's the time for any, just have any additional communication. So if you're going to share any additional communication you'd like to communicate. All right. Seeing none, I will officially adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Leslie.
Bye.